For the record, notice is hereby given that the common council of Danbury will hold public hearings at which parties of interest and citizens will have an opportunity to be heard in relation to the following, copies of which are filed in the city clerk's office for public inspection. Charter revision commission report, February 9th, 2009, 7:00 PM, Third floor, Common Council Chambers, City Hall, Deer Hill Avenue. I would ask that this time if the clerk would please call the roll.
McMan.
President.
Magusett.
President.
Callis.
Present.
Tombetta.
Present.
Calendino.
Present.
Perkins.
Present.
Disanti.
Present.
Shienese.
Present.
Esposito.
Present.
Savi.
Present.
Cabo.
Present.
Otello.
Here.
Diggs.
Here.
Teichels.
Present.
Arcanti.
Present.
Curran.
Here.
Knapp. Levy.
Present.
Riley. Seaberry.
Here.
Stanley.
Here.
One action.
Thank you, Mr. President, two actions. The record reflect that Mr. Knapp is out of town tonight on business, and Mr. Riley is also out of town. The public comment section of this meeting is for the council to hear your concerns about the charter revision commission report. At the time of the public hearing, we do not answer questions, we just listen to your questions and concerns, and then we will take them up in the community hall directly following. I will start off the meeting by asking if there's any member of the public that wishes to address the council, Mr. Wachovich, right there in the gun.
Thank you, Mr. Cabo, and members of the common council. First, let me just thank many of Joe Wachovich.
One thing I forgot is I need to have everyone, when you come up to speak, to please announce your name, spell your last name, so the clerk can get a clear record of it, and give us your address. Thank you.
My name is Joe Wachovich, W-A-L-K-O-V-I-C-H, 208 Southern Boulevard, Danbury, Connecticut. I'd like to thank the council for conducting this hearing, and I would also like to thank the members of the charter revision commission. I know they've spent many long hours on this document. I've reviewed the minutes, and I know that many of the issues that they discussed were hard decisions to make, and I appreciate their service to our community. It appears to me that the commission could have gone two routes in adopting changes to the charter revision. They could have created a more transparent, efficient, and responsive government for the citizens of Danbury, or they could have created a government that was more flexible and more of a comfort zone for public officials. And I think unfortunately, their deliberations had led them down the second path. The first thing that I'd like to discuss is the change in the recommendation that the terms of office for city elected officials be for four years rather than two. And first, I would note to the members of the council that this was not a decision that was easily arrived at by the commission, that they first took a vote on this recommendation on June 23rd, and the motion was defeated on a vote of four to two. And although they state in their minutes that they would allow any issue to be brought up at any time, I think it hardly is fair that Roberts' rules of order would require a reconsideration at their next meeting. But however, they took up the same item again a few months later on September 22nd and passed it on a vote of five to four. So regardless of the technicalities involved in how this decision was arrived at, it appears to me that the commission was decidedly split on whether or not the terms of office should be for four or two, should be for four or two years. Now, I've been an observer and a participant in government for over 30 years, and one thing that has always been obvious to me is that if you want to make a public official responsive and accountable, they will do so when they have the shortest length of service in front of them. Public officials who serve in office for four years find it somewhat of a comfort zone and are not as responsive in the first two years, thinking they have two years somehow to make up for any errors or false decisions they would have made in the two years. Someone who serves for only a two-year term, however, is more deliberative, more thoughtful, more patient, more considerate of the decisions they're going to make, because they know that the voter and the taxpayer is going to make the decision in the not-too-distant future. And I think history should always be a lesson to us. There were two good men who served the city as mayors in the not-too-distant past. They were not mean-spirited, they were not corrupt, but they just didn't have the needs of the city in their heart. They were going through a different path than the citizens of the city of Danbury. In both occasions, the citizens of the city of Danbury decided not to continue their service and did not re-let them to office. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, give the electors the benefit of the doubt here. Let them make a decision on a short term. Four years is too long for a city of this size. I believe that more accountability, more thoughtfulness, more deliberation will occur in our public officials if they had a shorter term. Secondly, I'd just like to briefly talk about the change of the bond minutes from $500,000 to $2,500,000 for an individual project, and $5 million for an aggregate amount in one year, when a referendum would have to be called for approving these bond notices. Again, I would go to the history of the city. The history of the city when dealing with bond actions, at least in my lifetime, the city has been pretty responsible. I can't recall many bond issues that have ever been rejected in the city of Danbury. We've remodeled our sewer plant, our water plant, we've built schools, we've built city halls, we've built firehouses, we've built police stations, sidewalks, roads, and whenever the amount was over $500,000, whether it was packaged into one large bond agenda, they were always unless an unreasonable project was put before the voters, they were always passed. We bought Terrywell, we bought the Hatters Park. I would venture to say, if you common council members deliberate later tonight, it'd be tough for you to come up with an instance where the voters have turned down a bond agenda, or a bond authorization. To go from $500,000 to $2.5 million for just a single project, the $2.5 only applies to a single project, while the $5 million notice or deadline refers to an aggregate over a year, that's just too high to go at this point, and I would ask you either to amend it or to reject this recommendation outright. And the third item I want to discuss today, and this may seem something as pretty harmless, and you may think I'm being petty by even bringing this up, but currently, any gift to the city of Danbury has to be approved by the council before it is accepted. The recommendation of the commission is to allow donations under $1,000 to be accepted by the city without the approval of the city government. Again, I don't think the approval here is what's important, but what is important is disclosure to the citizens. Right now, donations to the city of Danbury are not disclosed anywhere except on the common council agenda when it is brought up for approval, or unless somebody puts a picture in the neighbor section of the news times, handing the mayor a check and shaking his hand. I was surprised a year ago, when I received in my mail a direct solicitation in the form of a brochure from a city agency, seeking public donations from corporations, businesses, individuals, for the underwriting of a current city service. I was shocked, I'd never heard, why would a city department that is one that regulates many entities in our city, out-raising money, competing with other nonprofit agencies? The problem, or, I don't have a problem so much with them raising that money, but then where is the disclosure if this item is accepted? That agency could be accepting money from people they regulate. It could be coming in $300, $400, $900 amounts over the year, and we would never know who those disclosures are. From time to time, the city has called on and asked contractors and vendors to provide services to the city when worthwhile projects come up. For instance, I believe Hatters Park, the engineering services, the architectural services for that facility, when it was remodeled, were donated by a current contractor. If this provision is removed, I don't know where that would be disclosed, where would that donation be disclosed, especially if the contractor had taken the value of his services and divided it in 12-month increments, and then just said to the city, well, it was $500 every month, so it was a $6,000 donation. In the aggregate, it's over $1,000, but by what's here in the commission report, none of those donations would have to be disclosed, none of them would have to be approved. I think that the interests of the public, knowing who's donating to the city of Danbury, is paramount here, and I would also ask you to reject this recommendation. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wachovich. Colonel, you can start. Good evening, members of the common council, my name is David Coe-Lo, C-O-E-L-H-O, over at 52 Camp Hack Road in Danbury, and a lifelong resident of our city. I'm here to speak on two issues. The first, and also I'd like to echo the comments of Mr. Wachovich concerning the bonding, I believe that the bonding should go to the voters if it's over $500,000. It's a lot of money, and the city voters have always shown their wisdom in saying yea or nay, and as we know in past history, the majority has been yea. So give the last choice to the voters, you'll never go wrong with that. And the other item is concerning allowing a so-called authorized representative to speak at a common council meeting. I don't think that's right at all. City residents should be allowed to speak, definitely, but not people who do not live in our city. If a city resident wants to have, if they cannot speak for themselves or are not articulate, they could have their attorney certainly write their document, but let the city resident speak. We should not have hired guns here, speaking behalf of city residents. As it is now, city residents can only speak for a half hour between 7:30, 8 o'clock. Can you imagine having a couple of hired guns here before you speak, and then when do the taxpayers get a chance to speak? So this is definitely has to be shot down tonight with the hired guns. No so-called authorized representatives, I think we all know, because too many times we have seen authorized representatives at public hearings for zone changes. They come here and want to put a Taco Bell and a CVS on every street corner in the city of Danbury, and in the evening, they shake the Danbury dust from their pants, and they go back to their veteran communities. We can't even buy a chinita in their own towns, no them talking about. So tonight, I'd say definitely reject this issue of the authorized representative and have only Danburians speak at the common council meetings. Thank you very much.
For the record, my name is Joseph De Silva, 17 Mountain Hill Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut. Mr. President, I have brought some written submission, and I'm going to give it to the clerk before the members, I will keep my comments brief. I will concur with both of the previous speakers in several regards. To begin at the ending, with Mr. Coe's last point, authorized representatives. Please, listen to Mr. Coe. As an attorney and someone who's likely, or I would hope likely to be retained as an authorized representative, don't do that, please don't do that, limit this to Danbury residents and taxpayers. It would not be difficult to have hired representatives come here and show up most, if not all, of the limited public speaking portion of four common council meetings. Mr. Coe said, we are certainly able to, an attorney would certainly be able to draft, comment, submit them to the council, have their interests be heard, but certainly do it with a phone call, there's no need for that in front of the common council at a meeting in the limited amount of time people have. You wish to do it for a public hearing, that's fine, the common council, I don't think it's appropriate. Next, and I will not read my remarks, the written submission I've prepared, return again to the clerk, hopefully there are enough copies for everybody, four-year terms. This is a monumental change in the way city government in Danbury is constructed, and not one for the better. As Mr. Wachovich said earlier, this is something that is likely to cause elected officials to move further away from the people, not move closer. Now, I can certainly sympathize with every member on the dais, as anybody involved in politics as we all here are, we would all love to have a September and October once every four years with nothing to do, it would be fantastic. But that's not, that may be better for us, that's not better for our community. It is much more important for all of us to get out there, speak to the constituents, speak to your voters, attend events, run for office, make the phone calls, knock the doors. That doesn't happen with a four-year term, four years is a long time, and sends the wrong message to our community, especially when you consider the context, that we would think a 50% turnout in a local election is high. We all thought 70% turnout was high in this epic election of last year. When one year out of every four holds no election of any kind, we are not sending the right message to voters, and I am very certain we will do damage to voter turnout. We need to engage our community, not disengage from it, and disengaging from it is the outcome of four-year terms. Briefly, I concur. $2.5, I'm bonding, $2.5 million per project and $5 million in the aggregate proof, fiscally here, it's far too high. $500,000 may very well be too low in today's economy, in today's world, in today's cost. But the ramification of $5 million in the aggregate in a four-year term is $20 million worth of bonding, without the voters having either A, the right to vote on the bond itself, or B, vote on the people, vote for or advance the people who pass the bond in the first vote, the mayor and the common council. It's too much, it's too high. Lastly, settlement of lawsuits. The new proposed charging changes no longer require your approval to settle lawsuits provided they're within existing insurance coverage and policy limits. Now, while it sounds wonderful to avoid an agenda item requiring an executive session generally during midnight to consider the settlement, I caution you against this. Settlements, even ones that involve your existing insurance coverage, that only covers who's writing the check, that doesn't cover and does not deal with the ramifications of the settlement. There are lots of ways lawsuits are settled. They can be settled with outright releases and no admissions, they can be settled pursuant to settlement agreements that are detailed, comprehensive, and under ramifications. This body protects the people of the city of Danbury. It is your duty to review those so that you are aware. We may not be able to be aware because of confidentiality rules or something else, at least in the negotiation of the settlement, but those connotations, those things that come with settlement agreements, we should have the common council look at them. I know it may be annoying, it may be perfunctory, it may be pro forma, frivolous, and sometimes it may be a bother to review small settlements for simple slip and fall cases. Unfortunately, our charter is not a document that we can draft, so that some cases are in, and some cases are out. It is an organic document of government, it is our city's constitution, and it should be a general document. Make it a general document, review them all, undertake that activity, it is better for the city, it's better for the citizens. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mrs. Waller?
Sure. Mr. Wachovich next.
My name is Lynn Waller, 83 Highland Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut. I think I may be approaching things from a different point of view than the previous speakers, but the term of office of four years, I think, is much too long. I'm very concerned by the length of the ballot, if everyone gets four years. Think of the top three offices, 21 council members, 11 board of ed members, nine zoning members, five constables, and three alternative members for the zoning commissions. That's 52 positions for election every four years. I personally think that's much too long, and people would forget to vote for the end of the ballot, and I don't think that's fair. Would you please give some consideration if you go with the four years to splitting the ballot, electing some one year and some another? It'd be another unexpected benefit to splitting the ballot, as I suggested. If you have an ordinance or a referendum question, there would always be an election every two years, so that it would tend to help people. Section 3-3, I'd like to see the legislative assistant appointed by the council instead of approved, and approved by the mayor. I don't think the two branches of government, legislative and executive, being that combined, I'm concerned about that, and the city clerk or assistant, legislative assistant, I'm sorry, should be working with the council, and usually does. The assistant can always reach the president of the council by phone if necessary for city business, and that was one of the reasons they said that they needed to be working with the mayor. Section 3-11, which is on referendum, they have been kind enough to lower it to 10% number of registered voters to force any issue to a referendum. That is 3,400 signatures in 30 days, which is nigh on to impossible. If it were lowered to 5% of the registered voters, it would be approximately 1,700 signatures, or 3%, which could possibly be accomplished, would be 1,020. I believe it should be three or five. If any of you have ever tried to collect signatures, as I have, of registered voters, the three numbers are unattainable in 30 days. These numbers effectively close out the voter from any process at all, or any way to reconsider anything, and I think that's wrong. Public improvement assessments, number 7-8, page 1, on page 27, public improvement assessments, I'm very uncomfortable with the wording here, where it reflects to public works or improvements. If it has been added to cover private roads, be covering public roads, it should say so. I was told that that was the intent, but even if it is the intent of this commission or this council, no one knows how a future mayor may read this portion of the charter. Curbs, paving, roads, parks in neighborhoods could eventually be charged to the homes in the neighborhoods, if the wording in this portion is allowed to stand. Please revisit it. I'm really upset about that, because if they put a road in, and they say it's going to benefit your home, they may assess your home, the way it's worded today in the charter, and it's a new addition to it. I don't mind sewer and water, those things I understand. 7-5 in the charter is basically emergency appropriations, but there is no limit on the amount that they can bond and spend without the approval of the taxpayers. Once again, you're closing the taxpayers out. We don't even know what the definition of an emergency is. Jody Rell recently declared that a bridge was needed to be built, and didn't have the time to go through all the statements, so she appropriated it under emergency terms. This does not fall under 7-10 or 3-11, so it could be bonding of a tremendous amount, and I'm concerned about that as a taxpayer. No cap on bonding, except what the state requires, and you know that number is tremendous, like 900 million or something like that, it's a tremendous number, only cap that was put forward on that. Section 7-10 on borrowing has been pretty well covered, but again, I feel the people are being closed out of this process. 2.5 million per project, that may be okay, but one citizen spoke before the commission, the charter commission, and said that even with inflation, from the $500,000 to today, the number should only be 1.5 million. That sounds a little better to me. We, the public, don't get a vote until the administration needs more than $5 million a year. A number I feel is much too high. Don't get me wrong, I am relieved you at least have a cap on it, but I think it needs to be much lower. We are driving citizens out of their homes with the bonding and the amount of money that needs to be paid. I would like to praise the commission for all the time that they spent working on this, and I would also like to praise them for not combining planning and zoning. I really believe the public is served better by having several times to speak. And my final one may sound silly, but conflicts of interest. I know that they regulate your family, I believe this should not only include elected officials and employees, but their extended families, cousins, brothers, relatives, not just the immediate family. And I'm really pleased they put a periodic review in, because I don't think we should go from 1977 until 2008 before we look over this charter. So they put a 10-year looksee, I mean, they may not make any changes, but at least a look at it, and I think it's excellent, put this periodic review in. I think some of my comments have been immortalized in Mary Conley's editorial, where she talked about democracy and encouraging the public to speak, and encouraging the public to be involved. I have the feeling with the new rules on the bonding, on the four-year term, on the $20 million, all of that, including how many signatures are needed for a petition, just plain close the public out of all of this. So I really would appreciate it if you'd take some time and look at all of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Waller. Sir?
My name is Steve Roden Dow, D.O.W., 83 Highland Avenue, Danbury. With all these proposed changes, what I see listed, I see a no, unnecessarily, all of them except one. That one, reduced from 15% to 10% the number of registered voters they've just needed to force a random amendment, from 15% to 10%, I would say, yeah, I would see the necessity of that, but as for the rest of the changes, I'd say no, unnecessary. But when I read about the term of office change, from two to four, the alarm bells started to ring, and I thought of William Shakespeare and Senator Henry Hyde in Congress. Shakespeare said, "There is something rotten in the state of Danbury. Something doesn't smell right about who will profit from two more years in office." We do not need someone tampering with our constitutional charter, because it has been working perfectly for years. The last thing we need is term extension, we need term reduction. Everyone in this room knows what happens when you increase years in office, such as second terms or extensions. Governor Rolson, President Clinton, Bush, the list goes on, each term. We do not need to create that virus in the city of Danbury. Senator Henry Hyde looked at the new, all the new members, freshmen and fresh women, members that were coming into Congress one time. Senator Hyde, 17 years in Congress, and he said, "Look at all these freshmen and fresh women, this place, Congress, there's no place for amateurs." There's a man in strength in office, continuous term. There's a man in strength in office, continuous term over and over again, this is a point here, an attitude, something we want to stop, if only we had term limits, not extensions. Mr. Morano said, "Officials think public apathy means they agree with the proposals. That is not true thinking. The public, the public expects their council members to object and to protest, protest, for, and to protect them. That is one of their functions."
Mr. Morano, will you stand up for one second? Let's put the tape over. I'll listen to when you get started on. Okay, please proceed.
I'm happy to hear here that the council is already concerned about four-year terms, which Commission Chairman, Mr. Morano, describes as radical. That is an understatement for this attempted sweeping change of a law that smacks of the demise of the democratic process. I believe I speak for hundreds of voters who will appear at the polls, and I call on every council member to consider exterminating this free-floating radical, to use a medical term, which profits someone at the expense of the citizen voters of Danbury.
Thank you, Mr. Morano. Coming from this side of the room, sir?
My name is Norman Werneman, W I N N E R M A N, in, uh, livet twenty-eight, Nancy Drive, in Danbury. I'd just like to make a few brief comments. Other people have already spoken of going into more detail, and I intend to, but I'd just like to throw my support to those who feel, as I do, that the idea of having a non-citizen speaking at the public sessions, a so-called authorized representative, ought not to be allowed. I believe that the two-year term for our candidates for all of our offices is adequate. I really feel that four years is, is too long, and I take particular exceptions with the suggestion here to eliminate stagnant terms of the Board of Education. I shudder to think of the impact of all brand-new Board of Education members. If there is any group in the community, elected officials, that need some history, it's that group, and I think that it would, I've seen boards of education in other communities where there's a full, clean sleep, it gets scary, particularly for the people that have to work with these folks, so I would strongly urge that you do not do anything of that nature, and frankly, keep the collective terms as they are. I am concerned about the opportunity for the council and the mayor to borrow up to two and a half million dollars on a project. I really object to it. I could see bumping it from five hundred thousand to maybe a million and keeping a lower cap, but the idea of being able to just bond that, particularly, as was mentioned before, if there were four-year terms, I think it could get a little crazy, and I really think that the taxpayers ought to be able to have some say during the process. I would support the reduction of the number of petitioners to ten percent. I think that if there's a, an issue that really excites the people, that ten percent number could be gotten. If I wanted to get a petition, if I were alone, it would be impossible, I have to say, but on the other hand, if there were a hot topic that other people were interested in, I think we could fan out across the city and get signatures required to put it on to the ballot if we needed it. I also, I believe I mentioned the donations. If I did not, I support also limiting that. I, I really think public disclosure is a necessary part of open government, and I would support that. And that's about it. I don't want to linger. Everybody else has spoken before on these various issues. I thank you for your opportunity.
I'm Chris Halsar, eighth, that Lethal Road, Denver.
Please, please turn into the microphone so that...
H A, H A L S A R. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the common council. I would like first to add my thanks to all the members of the Charter Revision Commission for their many months of hard work, and now I'd like to discuss some ways in which I believe that their recommendations could be improved. One opportunity posed by the Charter Revision Process was to increase the balance between the executive and legislative branches of the city government. The proposed changes do not do this. In fact, the executive branch, the Office of Mayor, is actually strengthened against expense of the legislative, the common council. First of all, it's proposed that the Office of City Clerk be eliminated and replaced by a legislative assistant to the council. All well and good, but this new legislative assistant position will be filled by mayoral appointment. Furthermore, the council will lose its existing right to appoint additional support staff as needed. I believe the council, as a separate branch of government, should be able to appoint all of its own staff. Second, under the proposed changes, the legislative branch will lose the ability to review any settlements of lawsuits by the city, no matter how large. I think the council should continue to share and review of all but very, perhaps very small settlements. One of the goals of government should be increased, not decreased transparency. I also believe the commission has gone too far in increasing the amount of borrowing that the city can do without voter approval. The old limit of five hundred thousand dollars was perhaps out of date, but to go all the way to two and a half million with a cap, annual cap of five is excessive. I also wonder why the commission did not take the opportunity to introduce voter control on tax assessment deferrals, such as the one that went to PRT, resulting in the loss of tens of millions of dollars in tax revenue. If the voters can weigh in on large bond issues, why shouldn't we also have a fail assay in huge tax breaks? Finally, I believe the commission missed an opportunity to spell out remedies for violations of the charter, such as the mayor passing a vote improperly, ad hoc committees failing to report in timely manner, and council seats remaining vacant too long. So I hope the council will address these other issues, which will improve the revisions to the charter. Thank you.
My name is Joe De Silva, senior, one fifty-seven Compania Street, Danbury, capital B, capital S, I, L, G, A. Mr. President, council, common council members, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak, and also add my thanks to the Charter Revision Commission for their long and arduous work over the past year. I'd like to speak on several proposals in the, excuse me, from the Charter Revision Commission. I don't propose to be an expert on all areas of the council, but I do have some experience, not as much as our friend, Councilman Esposito, but I did spend seventeen years on this body, and six years as chief of staff for the mayor of the city of Danbury. And I have worked on almost all areas of the charter during those years. Our charter was written in nineteen, approximately nineteen sixty-five, sixty-six, after the consolidation of the city and town of Danbury, and has worked well for these many decades. I believe that changes to our charter should be made rarely, and only for very serious reasons, such as the constitution for our state and for our country. As you know, our charter is a strong mayoral form of government. It was proposed that way, and has worked very well for all these years. However, there are some areas that I think are some concern with the four-year term that is proposed for the mayor and for the council. To speak of a few of them, number one, as you know, it takes two-thirds vote with the common council to change any item on the mayor's proposed budget. In my twenty-three budgets that I, I worked on, there were literally tens of thousands of line items. Of those tens of thousands of line items, I can only think of ten, twenty, twenty-five that were ever changed. It's probably less than one hundredth of one percent that were ever changed. There were many times votes were taken on changes in the mayor's proposal, but very few of them ever changed. That is really a strong, uh, mayoral form of government. If you change that to four years, I think you're, you're taking away the power that the people have invested in you as com- common council representatives. Number two, committees, as you know, are appointed by the mayor. I'm sure there's some input from the council leadership, but still, committees which do the bulk of, much of the work for the common council are appointed by the mayor. Again, of the several thousand committees that I've heard report here in the common council, how many have ever been turned down? How many times have, uh, recommendations from the committees changed? Very few. Again, this is, this adds to the power of the mayor, and if, if a four-year term were to be granted, I think the power to appoint committees should be in the hands of the common council. As in the budget, I, I think if there were a four-year term, it would have to only be a majority of vote to change the mayor's budget, and not a two-thirds vote. And something that hasn't been mentioned, there's no recall provision in this, in this Charter Revision Proposal. There is no recall provision now in our charter, and I don't think we need one. Our, our government has worked well with a two-year term, I don't think we need one. With a four-year term, I think you would, you have to look at that much more seriously. And to, and to incorporate these things, the four-year term, with the, with the things I have just mentioned, and have a legislative assistant appointed by the mayor, I think would completely upset the balance of power in our government. I think it's unnecessary and potentially harmful. And I, I want to add, I don't speak of the present mayor, and I'm not speaking of the present council, but who knows what's going to lie ahead? I know Bridgeport and maybe even Hartford have changed the four-year mayoral terms, and it didn't get them very far, as you all read in the paper. And talking about running for office, I know what it is to run every two years for office, I did it ten times. I think it's a great vehicle and a great opportunity, opportunity to meet the voters, to knock on the doors, to make the calls, to go to events. I think it's great for the common council to get out there and meet the people and find out their ideas, and more importantly, for them to know their representatives, and I think it's done much more efficiently on a two-year basis than on a four-year basis. Very quickly, on the bond issue, I, I agree with what was, has been said here before. To go two and a half million, possibly five million, a year, over four years, is twenty million dollars, and that's, that's just ridiculous, it just can't be. I know that it's not going to be a thing that happens usually, but it can happen, and that's what we have to look out with, what we look out for. A charter is built not to be changed often, and I think we have to look to the things that might possibly happen, and the possibility of twenty million dollars over four years without the input from the voters just cannot be. And lastly, on the litigation, where the, the mayor and the appropriation council can, can sign off on that, without input from the council, I think is wrong. Please, don't give up your authority. I think you, you are the representatives of the people, and I think we need to have that in your hands, and not just the mayor. I ask you, please, to, to listen to the points that were made here tonight, not only by myself, but other people, and reject those items. I thank you very much for your kind consideration.
The topics have been so beautifully covered by so many speakers, and I still would like to thank the Charter Review Commission for all the work that was visible on TV and also the few times I attended in person. There's one section, seven dash eight, which Lynn Waller had alluded to, where she was told that in order to control the movement of private streets to public streets and assess them, that they had to add, "For course of public works or improvements that encourage special benefit upon an identifiable group of residents," that they would try to separate out for everyone in the city, how much of the benefit is for the general public, and how much is for individual residents, taxpayers. There's no standards for that, that's, that's too broad. I think laws have to be written so they're applied equally. The Connecticut chart, Connecticut Code of Statutes provides for the council in the future to do just what it says here, to pass an ordinance as you wish. That's when there should be a lot of discussion about the details of, how do you attribute benefit to the public and to just a portion of the public? It's an extremely complicated topic, if any of you live on streets that are cul-de-sacs. There are a number of involuntary private streets where the builders simply didn't give them to the city and stuck the residents of that area with the so-called status of private. They're not gated communities of any wealth or any status, they just happened to be left over from forty years ago by an accident of nature. This seems to specifically begin a process of punishing such groups of individuals. You don't even need to have that in the charter. When you get to where you want to have an ordinance to cover this, if you feel that's necessary, it's much more of a time for the public to comment, and you'll get more input, because at that point, people will realize that there are specific streets, of which there are quite a few private streets in Danbury, involuntarily private, who have paid taxes for forty years and gotten no city services, there's been no reduction in our assessments on our taxes, but now you want to specifically punish us when the time comes that a project might pass our door? Lynn is concerned about just the main thoroughfares like Main Street and Highland Avenue and all that, that you might assess those people facing onto those streets, but there's a lot of comment to be made on every street, whether it's a cul-de-sac or whether it's looking to be a main street. So I would ask you not to include that underlying section for seven dash eight, since the ordinance can be passed directly from the Connecticut State statutes authorization. You don't have to have the city charter say that you're going to know how to assess benefit between the public and an identifiable group of few homeowners. I don't think that should be in the charter. It's, it's very punitive without saying any criteria. I'm sorry to have run on about it, but those of us who are on involuntary private streets, who have paid our taxes and never gotten any services, have a point of view, and there's no reason to put that in the charter. The comments that were made tonight were absolutely wonderful, and meant I didn't have to spend all the other time, so I may have gone too long on one topic. I wanted to add my respect to all those people who got up and spoke, it's very difficult to do that.
Good evening. Mary Terracina, S A R A C I H A N O, five, British Power Court, Danbury. D R I N S C K L. Hi, everybody. I wanted to come tonight and talk to you as someone who has sat where you sit, and I wanted to speak specifically about the legislative assistant position. I feel very strongly, and I know you've all heard me speak about this before, about the separation between the legislature and the executive. I think that this position should be in your hands. I think this position should be a civil service position, it should be nonpartisan, and it should be a person who can work freely with both sides of the eye. who can work freely with both sides of the aisle, or all of the sides of the aisle if you have more than two parties. But to have the mayor appoint this person, have this person answerable to the mayor will only defeat your work. This is the person who will be disseminating the information to you, who will be arranging your committee, uh, appointments, who will be greeting the public in your name. This is a person who should be answerable to your president and to you, and should be a civil service position, a nonpartisan, and let that person learn the job and do the job for all of you and everyone who comes after you. Thank you.
Samantha.
It's kind of strange, especially seeing you. Um, the everything in the charter revision commission has all gone to work. And I will say a point, and I think that's a lot of it. But I do feel qualified to speak on the operations of the county council office. I was privileged over twenty years to work for nine council presidents, including my favorite, and at least probably eighty or more. Oh, yeah. Um, eighty or so council people, all great people. Um, against a four-year term for elected officials, that some, within the day they're not ready to the government because they're paid by tax dollars, just like the city employees, and they shouldn't have more time to learn the job than, than a city employee, seven employees, who don't learn the job in the years they're born. That's it. Some, I think someone would tell me there's a person made a comment that even more than two years, it has to be four-year term because you want it two years to learn the job. It's just not acceptable. It's like people don't like politicians. You can't give yourself more leeway than you give to each other. It's not right. Um, I think for the, uh, council or legislative assistant, call it what you will, it needs to be civil service. It needs to test it for skills. And I, when I tested for that twenty-three years ago, that was a rigorous, uh, process. They worked hours of written questions and tests and all kinds of things in it. When it was, um, living, living to two, I think, to top six, and had to be interviewed by a panel. They thought it was a state, uh, council people in the United States, council presidents, um, I think it's a mayor there. It was another hour of pressure. It has to be protected by civil service. This by nature, what you do is political. And if you have, uh, if you're here today, you might not be a good friend, and if that person knows all that institutional historical knowledge is wrong. You know, I was working beginning to work for a council, kind of, kind of, and, and, and stuff, but they knew everything. So I had wealth of knowledge that I could draw and try and make myself. But when, when, um, Miss Lynn came in, she didn't know anything about the council until we worked together. In fact, so junior said about the institutional historical knowledge is important, because you're coming up. But if your staff comes in and asks you who you all work, or most of you do, and you need someone to help you set you up and be able to put your, put your hands on this mission and you do. And if you could, I could do that. I didn't turn down the mayor's office to answer what the question was I knew it. And I think you need to give, to give, uh, someone else to fill it, fill up the institutional knowledge. But also, if you're the public, because the person working in that office, um, it's, it's your phone call, and it answers the question. If the office is closed, the business now may attempt, or you have six or seven people doing the job that I did myself, and I'm telling myself, and the standard of reports, it's not fair for the public not to be able to have someone answer the question all the time. Have to have someone who has the knowledge of revenue, committee, uh, business. I raise mostly this phone call. And you all pay, you all keep them pretty, um, clean. You're cutting that, whatever question you had, and you would have put my claim out of the way. So you put the literature out with the issue. And I think, I think that you're doing a disservice to the public by having to operate the way that's not. So thank you for all the work that you do. I'm gonna feel better than I felt how much time you all put in and how much you all took in the process of the public. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Baker, B.A.K.E.R. I live at twenty-two Sleepy Powell Drive. Um, I'm very pleased to see so many people here tonight. I read in the newspaper that no one came to these meetings and no one spoke, so I kinda felt obligated that I should come.
I did.
I hadn't been out in public much lately, but I'll be around. Um, I agree with a lot of things that were said tonight. I'm not gonna repeat them. One of the things that I am totally opposed to is the four-year term of elected officers. Uh, elected officers. At a time when states and other communities are putting term limits on elected officials, this proposal is going in the opposite direction. Even the President of the United States has two terms. In my opinion, if someone has done a good job, the citizens will elect them again. If they don't contribute during the meeting or even attend regularly, and they just don't represent their constituents, they can be voted out and we won't have to be saddled with them for another two years. Someone else can fill the seat. I know from experience that the job looks much easier before you take your seat on a volunteer basis. I am also objecting to the extending of the bonding capacity with our city of Tuba to two-point-five million per project and five million annually. Um, others have spoken much more eloquently than I can, but I just wanted to say that I am opposed to that. And one thing that I am approved of is the addition of the mayor accepting gifts, donations, et cetera, a thousand dollars or less on behalf of the city. I heard some things this evening that I didn't think about, but, um, as a school board member, this was one of the things that used to irk me. You'd get three hundred, five hundred dollars, and I had to go before the whole board. So I really believe that gifts, a thousand dollars and under, um, there's no reason for these gifts to be brought before the council for a vote. Norman made some good arguments that he may be able to change my mind. Um, I, I assume that this charter revision will be voted on as a whole document. If it's possible, I would like to see each change voted on separately. I would hate to see the entire document voted down because voters don't approve of one or more of the issues. And I know there've been some, uh, referendums that I myself have voted for when I wanted to vote against them because there were some issues in there that I really believed in. But I'm not sure that will happen with this document. I would also like to congratulate this commission and thank you all for the time and dedication that you put into your work. The city of Danbury is fortunate to have such dedication for this team. Good luck on all your future.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Richard Genelli.
Name's Richard Genelli. Here in the Democratic Council of the House. I live at eighteen Benson Drive. Uh, just briefly, I'd like to call your attention to section seven point eight, public improvements. Page twenty-seven is a document I have. The language on the bottom, which is underlined as other people have taught, is very vague. And I'd like to consider to change the language to what was intended. If it was intended for a specific purpose, then to, to make it specific in here, don't we just say, with regards to seven point ten, uh, borrowing, I do believe a half hundred dollars is too, too low. Uh, and so they need, but two-five, two-point-five, I mean, is too high. So perhaps consider something in-between that's a little bit more realistic. I thank you very much for your time.
I'm, uh, Bill Taylor, uh, twenty-three James Street. And, uh, just briefly, the first thing I wanna talk to you all about is, um, the, uh, this, uh, recognized speaker at the Hughes. I remember in October of America, held a forum for the cell tower residents, and it was great. He had, uh, a man that really knew what he was talking about, and that was great in that kind of setting. But when you come back in front of the county council, the last person that you all should be listening to are your residents, are your constituents in Danbury. And, and I don't think any paid professional can really make up for what the people that actually live here go through. Uh, the second thing is I think that it's great that you all run on two-year terms, and that, um, I, I think extending them to four years is not a good idea because they, everybody appreciates you all coming out and knocking on doors and calling on phones. I've been a part of it. And, um, just going to four years. Every, the, the first time I started following was the mayor's first election. And every year, oh-one, oh-three, oh-five, oh-seven, there have all been changes somewhere in the government. These elections serve a purpose, and I think the voters and the residents of the city appreciate that you all run on to your terms and you'd like to keep it like that. And, um, the last thing is the bonding issue. I don't think it should go up to two-point-five. As a younger person, I think I can speak on behalf of a lot of younger people in Danbury that love Danbury and would like to stay here. It feels like the government, as bonding goes up and up, and if this is inappropriate, I'm sorry, but it feels like you're buying drinks on our tab. And, and it's, it's, it's great that, that all these projects can happen because of bonding, but I think if it goes too far, that, uh, you, that the people, me and, and other people in the city aren't gonna be able to stick around to pay for them, and we're gonna have to move somewhere else. So thank you all for your time and, uh, all the, thanks.
Thank you.
Lynn Taberthak, T.A.B.O.R.S.A.K., on the twenty-ten Houston Road. And I'm here because there's a full moon tonight. You all saw it, I know you did. It was beautiful. But I'm actually here because of our two charter revisions that got left on the cutting room floor.
Ms. Taberthak, one second.
Sure. Thank you. Well, I think one of the biggest problems with our current charter that hasn't been corrected is that there are no penalties for violations of the charter. And I understand that there's a very cumbersome writ of mandamus where citizens can go to the Superior Court and force, um, the council and the mayor to follow the charter of the city of Danbury, but I really think that charter violations need to be addressed within the charter itself. Uh, during my term on the council, uh, there were two charter violations. Um, I think when Ted Consomkus, um, turned in his letter of resignation, it was sixty-one days before Councilman Curran was appointed to replace him, and that was a violation of the charter. Uh, and then again, uh, when we had our debate on the parade ordinance, the mayor voted twice to make a tie, which was also a violation of the charter. If we don't, if, if the charter of the city is our actual framework for our governance and not a book of suggestions, then it needs to have some remedies for violations. And that isn't being proposed in our, in our charter revision. The second suggestion, which is really very simple, is for all of our elected city officials, the council members, the city treasurer, the city clerk, the town clerk, to promise to uphold the city charter and ordinances in their oath of office. Right now, it's only the mayor in section four dash two who has a duty to faithfully execute all laws and ordinances. And I don't think any of you would mind shouldering that duty.
Thank you, Ms. Taberthak. Mr. Your Honor.
Mr. President, members of council. Uh, I'm gonna take a little different tact than other folks. I actually attended most of the charter revision commission meetings. Not all, but most of them. Uh, and I'm just really happy that there's this much public turnout tonight. Uh, I think that's one of the things that this town lacks a lot of, is public participation, although they do participate every two years when they elect you folks. Uh, there's a number of changes proposed by the commission that I'm not real happy about. Others I'm kind of neutral on, some I'd probably favor. Uh, but what I would like to see come out of this evening is, uh, this council not second-guessing all of the work that the Charter Revision Commission has done. They've been working on this thing for, what, a year plus? Uh, gone through endless, endless hours of, uh, meetings and consultations and, uh, weekly conferences. Their, their work is probably some of the most important commission work that happens in this town, even though it happens, in this case, for my thirty years, every thirty years, if so. What I would like to see that this council does is, again, not to redo everything that this commission has worked so hard on, let this document go to the people. And if it goes to the people as one document, I'm not certain. I, I, I would have a hard time supporting it. I would have a hard time voting yes, but I, I'm not certain one way or the other at this point. But if, if you break it down into major elements, as one of the other speakers had suggested, uh, let the people decide. It's the people's constitution. Uh, there's issues that people may have with the bonding limits. Uh, I have issue with that. On the other hand, I know that every bond issued, from no matter how small, has to come before you. You still have a say in it. Uh, but there's a lot of things in, in this town, these changes that the mayor can say. And some of it actually affect you, like the term, uh, the term two years after four years. It's almost self-serving either direction you wanna take, or maybe a conflict of interest, to either change or, you know, suggest that there be something other than what the commission is saying. Uh, I mean, you're acting in your own, I think, self-interest, regardless of the side of position you make around two years or four years. I don't really care personally. So the only thing I would ask is be very judicious in any changes we make from the bias. Let the commission's work stand. Let it go to the people. Let the people vote. Let the people decide. Thank you.
Sir, we're in the back.
I'm Bob Williams, Leaven Freeman Drive, here in Danbury. I'd like to thank the commission and the council for allowing me to be here, and the commission's work, and the work that you all have been doing. I moved into Danbury back in seventy-seven, and I started my own business here in Danbury in the early nineties. And it's a tax and planning business. But the point is, when I grew up in corporate America, my objective and basic fundamentals were auditing. And so I go understeal and coming from when I go to the checks and balances concept that I believe in. And I have a problem with the authorization for the representation of the speaking of the council members. I really believe the citizen, citizenry should be doing that. I do believe that the bonding may need to be increased, but to two and a half million dollars and then a five-million-dollar cap seems excessive. My biggest concern is the lack of checks and balances that would be prevalent if we could all go to a four-year term. As was brought out earlier, the attendance at this meeting is looked at as being large. Every two years of the, you all are out there believing you're appreciated because we understand what you're representing and who you're representing. And it doesn't matter the party, independent, Republican, or Democrat, you're out there, and we know how much money you don't make. So the concern I have, though, is that if there's four-year So, the concern I have, though, is that if this four-year term comes in, the lack of participation that you see now will even be greater as far as a lack of participation. For the four-year term, I really believe we're going to find that we're going to have the rule by the few rather than the total citizen. I'll ask that you keep the two-year term for your office as long as the mayor's office. Thank you.
Mr. Your Honor, please address the council tonight. Mayor Bowden?
Thank you very much, Mark Bowden, 23 Allen Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut. It's my pleasure and honor to be here tonight. I want to, first of all, just thank the Charter Revision Commission. A lot of those members are here tonight, along with Rick Gottschalk, their legal counsel, a longtime corporation counsel for the city of Danbury. They spent many, many hours, nights, and months working on this document, and doing research, and putting together what you have in front of you. So, I want to thank them. I also want to just say that you've heard some key areas where folks have concerns about, and we certainly respect and applaud the fact that they've come down to share those with us. But I would also say that there are many things in that document that people are very supportive of, and so we should recognize what also is good in the work they've done, and there's many, many changes from start to finish in this particular recommendations. And I would also say to the council that these are recommendations to you, and your job tonight, later on during the committee, to hold, be to make recommendations back to the commission, and Rick will explain that whole process a little bit later on. So, it's important that you take your feedback here from the public, you take the feedback that you hear on the street, or as you're in the store getting your coffee, and you certainly feedback from each other later on as you talk about some of these issues. I'm not going to belabor a lot of the points, but I do want to just mention really where I see this to be four issues that have kind of arisen tonight that probably would be a focus of deliberations later on, if there's consensus on the majority of the body, and it really, of work, it really is a majority, because if you're only talking to four issues, there are many. Specifically, the issue of the four-year term has been raised tonight, and there are pros and cons on both sides of that particular issue. The commission split basically right down the middle on that. There were two votes, as the speaker had mentioned earlier, and it was a very contentious issue back and forth. And so, I've had mixed emotions about that particular issue. My recommendation to the council, should you decide to take it, you don't have to, it's up to you, would be really to set up at least, like Mrs. Baker had said, two questions on the ballot. The first question would be where there's, everything pretty much is in consensus, or people who, you know, again, this is a compromised body, so that you may not like it completely, but people are generally on the same boat. And then the second question would be strictly related to the four-year term. And that would give the people an opportunity to vote on this. I mean, that's really what we're about, democracy rules, and, and people want it, they'll vote for it, they don't want it, they're going to vote it down. But you're also not going to lose all of the good changes that were made, that everybody pretty much agrees upon, or may, you know, argue over little smaller points about. So, I think by splitting the question will certainly make a better presentation to the voters, and then they can make a judgment about what they want to do or what they don't want to do, based on the discussion that surrounds that. And I want to quickly mention the issue of insurance and settlement insurance that was brought up a couple times tonight. It's actually brought up during one of the Charter Revision Commission meetings, when that provision was added in there. The language that you see before us is our current practice. It is our current practice. It's been our current practice for the last roughly 30 years. So, we're not changing anything that we don't already do. Any settlement that requires an authorization of appropriation from you comes here. But from day to day, there are literally, I'm not going to say dozens, but there are certainly several issues that arise throughout the city, whether it be hitting a pothole, whether it be something that's slipping and falling, whatever. Those are handled by our carrier and don't generally come to this body for deliberation and for adjudication. We did years ago, if you go back and read some of the old minutes from the county council back at the turn of the 20th century, every slip and every fall and everything would be discussed and deliberated over at the council meeting. The council at the time, over the years, have decided to get those issues out of here because it ended up being very contentious, and once we brought in the insurance carrier, those things are handled by the insurance carrier that we have. So, that's current practice. The issue of bonding has been raised tonight, and there's another very contentious issue that the commission wrestled with back and forth. I came in early on at the first public hearing, and by the way, this is our fourth public hearing on this issue with the, with the commission. I asked for an increase in the bonding limit and a cap. There were some members of the commission, and I know they can speak to this later on, that felt that there shouldn't be any cap, and I respect their opinion. There were others that felt it should be a lower cap. So, like any law that we have, the compromise that the commission came up with was a system that you see in front of us. I will tell you that $500,000 for any one single project is not practical in today's day and age. I think we've talked about this before. I can just point to several projects we've just completed that have been in the millions, the Rose Street Bridge, the Bacchus Avenue Bridge, the Two-Pain Amphibious have all punched through the $500,000 mark. So, the problem with that is that it'd be very difficult for us to develop an ongoing capital plan that we're constantly replacing bridges, replacing roadway, doing drainage work, if we have to schedule a vote every time we do that. So, whatever number you come up with is fine, but I'm going to tell you that 500,000 per project, it, it just makes it almost impossible to get anything done. Remember, most things designed, your soft costs right off the top are going to be $100,000. So, now you're down to $400,000 before you put a shovel in the ground. So, that was a contentious issue in front, in front of the commission. They worked really hard at it, and that's just the result they have. So, we certainly respect the work that they did at that. The other issue, there's been discussion about the appointment of the legislative assistant that's in there. And I would just say this to the council, that the day-to-day interaction of the presiding office, of this officer of this council, is between the mayor, who's the presiding officer, and the legislative assistant. That's the net-net. And if somebody should go to the office and there's nobody there, they don't call the council president, they come down to my office and say, "I need this piece of paper, can you help me out with this issue?" Or whatever the point may be. Or, if somebody refuses to help them in the office, which has happened before in the past, that's a problem, and there's no way to remedy that, whether you have a civil servant in there or not, because the council president is an absentee, is busy doing his or her job in their own private business, and frankly, can't take the time to run down, actually City Hall to mediate a dispute or a problem. So, the point here was to create some kind of hierarchy within City Hall to make sure that all the departments are functioning and regulated appropriately. It certainly isn't a way to make a power grab, and that's why there's a provision there that the council has to approve, whatever appointment is brought forward. Certainly, you'd have to do some kind of testing that would only make sense, that you'd create some kind of list and develop that list and then bring a prospective appointee to the county council. So, that would be part of the hiring process. But beyond that, other than that, I think folks have pretty much brought up some interesting points and some good points, and I appreciate them coming out tonight and sharing their concerns with you. And again, I just want to publicly thank Rick and the team on the Charter Revision Commission for the, all the hard work they've done, and it really reflects a lot, a lot of work. So, thank you. We're going to double your salaries. That's fair and fair enough.
Does any other member of the public wish to address the council? Marjorie Brooks?
Hello, I'm Marjorie Brooks, 4 Cannondale Drive, and I'll agree with other people that a lot of good comments have been made, so I'll just go to one issue to expand upon with my husband I talked about with section seven dash eight. We did look up the state statute today, and we did find that a municipality may assess improvements on public roads, and there's also a provision which specifies a slightly different procedure for assessing benefits on a private road. I'm a little concerned that I'm seeing a difference in wording between the state statute and what's here. In the state statute, it's nonspecific about when the city should assess the benefits or is allowed to assess benefits, and they use the word that the municipality may assess benefits. This one is reading that it shall, shall be assessing that, that the, that the costs shall be borne by those whose properties benefit. The state statute in no way is talking about who's benefiting or who's not benefiting. And my concern would be that it's a very subjective thing to determine what percentage is of benefit to somebody or not of benefit to somebody, and that it might not be applied evenly, whether intentionally or non-intentionally. And so, again, in summary, the difference in wording between may and the Connecticut State statutes, the fact that the state statute already does provide for a way to, for the municipality to assess people both on public and private, so therefore wondering why this needs to be in the charter at all. And also the discrepancy between the ceiling out of that issue of whether you personally benefit as a property owner versus the fact, versus just the fact that you happen to live somewhere. The state statute did not make any distinction between whether you benefit or don't benefit. I hope I've been clear. I'm just speaking extemporaneously, but I hope I made my points there. Thank you.
Ms. Brooks, thank you. It's one of the things that we'll ask corporate and council when we get into that session. Does any other member of the public that wishes to address the council? Come in.
I'm Karen Silver, aside all the, uh, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. This is in Danbury, it's, as I thought, I have the industry, so, but it seems to me that there's a very obvious comparison when we're talking about terminals to the government of the United States of America, where the members of Congress are appointed for two years, members of the Senate are appointed for six. There is a difference in the responsibilities they have, but the regional term is true, and people have an opportunity to elect or not to elect people who are in office and to express their opinions about the performance of the Congress people. And it seems that that is a very clear analogy to the situation in Danbury, and I am really frustrated that we should not extend the term limits for this.
Does any other member of the public that wishes to address the council tonight? Does any other member of the public that wishes to address the council? The Charter Revision Report? Mrs. Samah, given me your opportunity early tonight, and I generally, okay, I generally don't give a second shot at this question.
It's just a little issue that's been on my mind for years. Here in, in the charter, as it exists today, they call the chief of staff to the mayor the administrative assistant, and that may have been okay back when it was first instituted, but I think even Ethan McLaughlin, he has cards printed, called himself the chief of staff, and really, that really better reflects the duties of that individual. So, when you're going over the charter, just a little housekeeping thing, you should change that administrative assistant to the mayor to chief of staff, because that document will be in existence for many, will all be dead by the time they change it again, so I think.
I hope so, Mrs. Silver.
So, if you could just change that, it would make me really happy.
Okay, thank you. Does any other member of the public that wishes to address the council on the Charter Revision Commission Report? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on the Charter Revision Report? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on the Charter Revision Report? See, none? Motion been made and signed by Mr. Perkins. Try your minds on closing the public hearing. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody? Okay, motion carries. Public hearing now stands closed. I've had a request from several council people to have a 10-minute recess between the halls. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
McMahon?
Present.
Nagaseth?
Present.
Palace?
Present.
Trumbetto?
Present.
Calandri, Camandino, I'm sorry. Perkins? Visconti? Shinis? Esposito? Sadi? Cabo?
Present.
Rissello?
Here.
Diggs?
Here.
Tyshilts?
Present.
Arcanti?
Here.
Curran?
Here.
Knapp?
Levy?
Present.
Riley?
Seaberry?
Here.
Stanley?
Here.
Nineteen members present, two absent. The record clearly reflects that Mr. Knapp is out of town on business, and Mr. Riley is out of town as well. At this time, the council's in buildings, I would like to ask Mr. Gottschalk if he would please step forward to the microphone and give us, give the council just a brief rundown on the happenings to date and how we got to where we are today, and some guidance on moving forward from here tonight. If you would be so kind, I appreciate if you.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to be back.
Uh, Rick Gottschalk, Secretary of State, Danbury. Seventeen months ago, I think, more or less, you appointed a Charter Revision Commission, nine members, who held a public hearing, and perhaps held two dozen meetings. At each meeting, members of the public came, you, some of you came, to speak to these, for these members. They tackled, as you heard tonight, they tackled some extraordinarily difficult issues, and I think that they did their best. I personally didn't agree with every choice they made, but I agreed with most of them. And now, it's your turn to take a crack at this. The commission sent you a draft report. It's their first attempt. It might be the final report, but it doesn't have to be, that depends on you. They submitted a draft report, and you had then 45 days to make recommendations back, to hold, I'm sorry, to hold a public hearing. You've held this one tonight. You have to have held your last public hearing within 45 days. And then, you have an opportunity to make recommendations. You have 15 days to do that. The recommendations, the statutes don't spell out exactly the nature of the crafting of those recommendations. They could be, I suppose, general or specific, depending on how detailed you want to get. Could be, take another look at the term lengths, or it could be a specific recommendation to return to two years. Similarly, with bonding, could be a general recommendation or a specific one. That's up to you. But then, I suppose there's, there's a default position, which is you allow those 15 days to elapse without making any recommendations. If you do that, then the draft report of the commission becomes the final report. I'm assuming, based on what I heard tonight, that you will have something to say about these proposals, and there are many of them. Some of them didn't hit the radar tonight, which I suppose is the good news, but some of them are difficult to grapple with. You have 15 days then to make recommendations. Then the commission gets a chance to think about what they've heard from you. Before they issue their final report, the commission is to confer with the council concerning the recommendations. The statute doesn't say what in the world that is, but we'll figure it out. You have 15 days, you make recommendations, there's a conference of some kind, and then, within 30 days of receiving your recommendations, the commission issues a final report to you. After the final report, you have 15 more days to accept or reject in whole or in part the contents of that final report. After that, you pause it to be published, you set a date for the voters, the electors of the city of Danbury, to weigh in one final time on these issues. You determine whether or not the questions, the contents, the fifty, one thousand, one hundred and 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 fifty, one thousand, one hundred and[1706.12]